Okay, it's August 3rd, 2021, 7:32 PM. I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present, Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, John T. Hands, and Joe Hall. And myself. So, applications to be received, item C, South Wellington Village text amendment.
So, we talked about this a couple of months ago. Economic Development Commission, we've been working with them on a text amendment application to deal with South Wellington Village area. So, we've been workshopping that, we have the final language, so this is just to be received. I have to refer it to CROG, so there'll be at least thirty days before we can schedule a hearing. It was linked to the agenda, I mean, I can, I can pull it up, wanna look at it, but we're just receiving it.
Nah, you can send it to us, I guess, and we can review it for the next meeting. Is this something that legal will look at as well, or no?
There's really nothing complicated in it, or not, but, I mean, we can send it to them for review if you want.
I don't know, I don't know what the other members think, I'm just asking.
Yeah, we can, we can look at it, and if there's anything in it that we want clarified, or whatever, we can, we can send it to Rich and Ken. For legal review. Okay. I have another application to be received, which came in, and it's not, it's not listed here. Thirty-two Hancock Road is a one lot subdivision that was submitted. It's gone to Joe Dillon for an engineering review. So, based on timeframe to get that back, it'll be on the agenda for an upcoming meeting as well.
I saw the ad, the guys advertising that renovated apartment building in the village now. I thought that was encouraging.
Which?
Oh, there's an ad that popped up about these period beautiful apartments in the village that have been fully renovated, three bedroom apartments, live in a historic piece of the world.
Oh.
I think it was, had to be on Facebook, on the, through the Wellington, for the Wellington Friends and Neighbors thing.
Yeah, I usually see that, I didn't see that yet.
I know that the, the owner of the mill, Tom Bucino, has, owns the, the home across the street, and he, you know, a year and two years ago, I toured that building, and he had spent a lot of effort to renovate it. It's a very old, but it's only two units, maybe?
Yeah, I don't remember what it said, I, the picture, I think they had a picture, and it made me feel like I'm looking down the, I don't remember the name of that street, I think it's called Village Street, towards the, you know, towards Halls Pond, that's, that's
Oh.
That big square tenement style thing on the right. That's, that's what I was imagining, but that may not be what it was. I didn't call him, I didn't actually go down and look for a sign or anything, I just saw it on, saw it on the Facebook page. Thought it was kinda cool.
Yeah, anything helps.
All right, new business, a Conservation Commission discussion grant for Talmage Estate acquisition.
So, I'm gonna try to bring something up here, so that I can share some information, and everybody can read it. I don't know, Bob, I see you're here now, I don't know if you have anything that you wanna say or talk about, or if you want me to go with what I got from Kathy about the, the Conservation Commission's project with this?
I, I think it would be worthwhile if you read her letter, Mike. I would just add to this whole thing that we just need a letter for the state grant. And, hello, am I still there?
Yeah, you're, you're, yeah.
Oh, okay, I've, I've got low battery. But, we just need a written letter, basically the same thing that we went over before, when we were said that we were in favor of the purchase of that property. And, we need that in order to be, for part of the grant proposal.
Yeah, so, I can share this, so that people can see it? We talked about this before, okay, did you, I'm pretty sure, didn't we? Wasn't this brought up in the?
Well, we brought, we brought it up just because they, we needed clarification for the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance, but now we need clarification in a written letter that can be part of the grant application when we apply to the state.
So, just that the Planning and Zoning Commission approves the purchase, or whatever, it is some supportive document?
Yeah, pretty much Kathy laid it, laid it out in that letter she sent, and that pretty much verbatim what she has in the letter would do the trick.
Perfect, it seems like, no, just, I'm sorry, I've been a little bit absent. You're buying the old Talmage property, the, the houses stuff, and those grounds?
No, not, not, not the house, just the sixteen plus or minus acres on Marsh Road.
Okay, cool.
Can you see that?
Nice. See, see that little orange sliver, Andy?
I do now.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the parcel right there, and it adjoins the first part of their property that we bought also.
Yeah, you bought that, I know, one, oh, I'm, cool, I always liked the Talmage.
So, you know, we're thinking about adding another trail in the, on the, on the Talmage into the Norton property, maybe?
Perfect.
So, there is a letter of, suggested letter that's, that Kathy has sent, which basically outlines all the reasons why the purchase of this piece of property would be beneficial to the town. You know, the fact that it's got, you know, it's contiguous with existing
Absolutely.
So, so she's provided a, an example or suggested letter, both to Inland Wetlands and to the PCC, basically asking that you endorse officially through a letter of support, the town's grant application. So, I, and Bob can clarify, but this is a grant, so, there, is there a town match?
Well, the, the town is going to pick up what the grant doesn't cover. And, you, when we applied for grants from the state previously, it was usually about fifty percent of the cost. But, last year, evidently, they had an awful lot of applicants for grants, and the, the grants came in at, I believe, about forty percent of the purchase price. But, you know, that, that's okay too, it's, if the state's willing to kick in, you know, a decent percentage, that still helps us out.
What is the purchase price?
The purchase price is a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And then there's associated costs that the money from our open space fund is gonna cover, A2 surveys,
Oh, yeah.
et cetera, et cetera. So, and that was approved at the town meeting tonight. So, sixty thousand dollars is coming out of the open space fund, which is already in hand, and then a hundred and one dollars is gonna be taken out of the reserve fund, I believe. And, depending on what the grant amount is, will, we won't use all of that money, so it'll go back to where it originated. Either some back into the open space, or some of it back into the reserve fund. That's how that's gonna break down.
Very well done.
We try.
You, you execute, you do a lot more than try.
So, I'm gonna make a motion into, you know, accept, you know, the, I guess, the, writing a letter to to support, to support the purchase of this, seeing as we've already been in support of it, but just to make it official and write the letter.
I, Andy Marco will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, approval of minutes, July 6th, 2021.
Oh, you know, I didn't even read them.
Should be, I'll abstain. There's enough people here to
Yeah, it would have been in the, in the folder that went out with the agenda.
That's fine, I wasn't here, I didn't listen to it.
Yeah, all right, okay, we have enough people here, though, to vote out if we want to. Anybody wanna make a motion to accept the minutes of July 6th?
I'll move to accept the moment, the minutes as written.
Okay, second.
I'll abstain.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, minutes approved. No correspondence, Mike? No, okay, I public comment. Commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here. There can any comments be made about any items on the agenda? Anyone from the public out there?
Hey, just me, this is Andy again, I wanna throw something, I want to get on the agenda to put my properties back together. I had a building, my parents had given me a building lot a long time ago, never did with it. And now that I'm living there, and I'm, I'm, I'm back on the deed, I just wanna put the properties back together. I kinda wanna play that card where our zoning regs say that owners of adjacent properties can't have separate lots. So, that's what I'm thinking. I just wanna put them back together. It's, I mean, it never was, I mean, it wasn't physically divided, it was just divided on paper. I got a separate deed, but then I didn't build anything there, now I'm back. So, can I get that on the agenda for the commission to consider, or is that a staff issue, Mike?
You don't need any approvals from us to combine, you only need them to either revise lines, or to so you just, you just
It was a, it was a free, it was my free cut, and I just went on, other.
Yeah, so, if
I'm gonna be buried on that property, probably, so, I don't plan on doing it with it.
Did you get, I mean, if you got the free cut, and you filed it, and executed the deed in the, or the map, then, then it's a separate cut, if you're being assessed as a separate parcel, then it exists. If you, if you did the whole map, and, and but never actually
No, I was all cut, I'm paying two tax bills, but I'm looking at the piece of property, and it's, I just wanna put them back together.
Yeah, so you can, you can do that with a deed or a map, and you just file it, you don't need any
All right, then I will, let me, I'll get in touch with you next, well, I'll talk to Peggy next week, then see what I gotta do.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, appreciate it. Public, that's my public comment.
All right. I guess you're back on the commission now, after being the public. All right, Jay, staff report discussion, a legislative review.
So, again, I, I sent this out, I can share this, I'll go through it quickly. But, you know, we've talked a lot about the various legislative changes that occurred, and so what I went and went through the regs, and basically pulled together a brief summary of how they have impacted what we have, and what we, I guess, need to do. So, and, and like I said, I sent this out, so you can look at it more closely. Let me see if I can zoom in on this, see, I'll see it. Hopefully, that's big enough. So, the first one, outdoor dining needs to be by site plan approval, which means we can't require a public hearing. Our regulations currently only allow restaurants by special permit. So, addition of a patio would require the modification, so we need to modify the regs. My suggestion would be to be allow these outdoor dining establishments by accessory use, so that they're tied inherently to a primary restaurant use. Family childcare allowed as a right, this pretty much just clarified something that was already allowed, which basically says if you have a small in-home daycare of less than six kids, the town has to treat that as a single-family home. I'm still looking at it, we may need to tweak our home occupation regs slightly, but that one, we're, we're pretty much compliant on. Cannot regulate mobile manufactured homes substantially different than other types of housing. We do not prohibit the use of a mobile manufactured home as a dwelling unit, so we're in compliance there. The next one is that we cannot prohibit cottage food, the cottage food industry, so basically someone who wanted to participate in that, not to necessarily run something out of their house like a restaurant, but if they wanted to, to prepare as part of the, what is considered to be the cottage food industry out of their house, we could not prohibit that, our home occupation regulations would not prohibit that. We have those requirements in place now, so that is not an issue.
What kind of health department stuff that they have to qualify for?
Depending, depending on what they're doing, and the size, and what they're making, they may need to put in certain commercial kitchen type appliances for cleanliness and cooking and venting. That stuff still applies.
Okay, good.
But they're still, they're still bound by Board of Health rules, correct?
Yes, that's where I was going, Andy, good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, just, we can't say it's not zoned for that, but as long as they comply with health regs, then they're okay.
I don't think we care if anybody's making jam in their kitchen or something.
Right, yeah, right.
Always gonna have salmonella to the
Right, right, yeah, exactly, no, we can't, we can't do anything about the health form, all that stuff still applies. We can't set minimum floor areas for housing, so this one basically says you can't tell someone if you're building an apartment that it has to be a thousand square feet, or if you're building a house, it has to be nine hundred square feet, you know, first floor. So, we do have minimum floor area requirements in the section four point oh two point oh five, so we will have to remove those.
Right. What's this do to, like, you say you have a neighborhood, right, that's all currently two acre lots, and like, you know, big one here, Clover Farms, I don't know, you know, something like that, right? So, somebody just says they're gonna build three hundred square foot house in there, how does this work?
Well, you know, you, that's a great point, Walter, because this, you know, this is, it went to the Supreme Court several years ago, I've been looking for this for a while. And what is this, Supreme Court several years ago, I think, basically the rule, the Supreme Court decided that there is no direct relation between size of the home and quality of life. Therefore, you can't really regulate it, but you can still say minimum of forty thousand square feet, you have to have an engineer septic system, your well still has to be, meet standards, all of those other parameters exist, but the dwelling can be a tiny home now.
Right.
Yeah, but it has to meet all codes, it isn't like you could just throw up, I don't, I don't, and I, I don't think you can just go buy a shed at Clover Farms and call it a house, because it wouldn't meet all of the other building codes, but there are plenty of, it kind of brings in the whole, again, that whole, the, the previous one about manufactured homes differently. It does mean you could do trailer parks again, but only on two acres. Right, I mean, the two acres hasn't changed, so.
The, this came up because the idea is a lot of towns have minimal floor area requirements, which say, you know, like, for example, Ashford, they have a regulation which says that the minimum first floor area of a single-family dwelling needs to be nine hundred square feet.
Yeah, right.
Which means you're pretty much tied to building a house that's a certain size, and when you tell them something has to be, it, it is potentially increasing the cost, you're making them build a bigger house than they want, and so
That's right, that's right.
That's, that's where this came from. But, yeah, they still need to meet building code, they still need to meet health code, they still need to sign compliance foundation, and heat, and cool, and insulation, and roofing. It still needs to meet all those requirements, which is why I think we haven't seen as many houses being built by containers as you might see on, online.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But if you take the previous, you take the previous one, manufactured homes, and then minimum floor area. So, now I could buy a container house, and if it meets the zone, if it meets building codes, I could put up some weird looking place, that, which is fine with me, I don't mind, I'm not against it at all, I think it's, probably, I think it's time for the change, but it is gonna look different, people are gonna talk about.
Yeah, so you can not regulate how big something has to be, but you can regulate how big something can be. So, we, we can't say you can't have a, you know, something that's more than X, but we have to allow them to build it as small as they want.
Yep.
Next one is cannot require parking minimums beyond one space for a one-bedroom unit, or two spaces for larger units. You can out-dow this in theory, but we're in compliance. Some towns were using parking requirements as a way to get around basically prohibiting accessory dwelling units, so they'd say, well, yeah, you can have an accessory dwelling unit, but you need to have two parking spaces per number of bedrooms, and if you have a regular driveway, and you have a three-bedroom house, you don't have potentially eight spaces to show, so this is a barrier. So, we don't have any worries about that. Can't cap the total number of multifamily units in a town, some towns have, you know, limited the total number they're gonna have in town, they already know. We don't, we don't have that, so we don't have any issues there. The other one was basically that we cannot cite a district's character, cannot use the word "character" in approval and denial criteria. So, for example, if the town had said, "We're gonna deny the Dollar General application, because we're worried that, you know, a big box retail store is going to destroy the town's rural character," that would not fly, and the reason for that is that character is not tangible, it's not a design criteria that can be measured.
So, you can't tell them then what kind of building they need to put up?
You can talk about things that are
Because we brought that up very much so, like, even when Dollar General came in, what it need to look like, and things like that, to fit in with the character of this.
So, you can talk about the historic architectural features, you can talk about site design, density standard, you can talk about all those things, because you can tell the person that the, that the building doesn't match the historic buildings in town, you can, there's a design standard that you can point to, but simply saying, "Well, having big box retail would destroy the town's community character, or the character of the community." They don't know, they can't plan or design or engineer for that, and so the idea was, because it's not tangible, you need to cite something that is more physical.
Yep. So, so, so they, they're basically looking at more of physical appearances that you can, you have to be more specific about what you're looking for without talking about character.
Exactly, because nobody knows but you what your idea of a community character is, but you telling them that they can't build a building that belongs, you know, in, in downtown, you know, X, Y, and Z city, and you prefer it to be more historic in nature with the type of roof, and this and that, they can very easily respond to those comments with modifications in their design.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so they just wanna make it more clear, because again, a lot of towns would deny an application for housing or for development, and say it would be destructive to community character, and just leave it at that.
Act like say you had an empty lot in a historic district, and somebody wanted to put like a tiny house on it. How does that work?
If you're in a historic district, I think, for lack of a better explanation, all bets are off, because you still have to get a certificate of appropriateness, you still have to go through that whole process, so I don't think they would have an easy, you can make a tiny Victorian or something, you can make a tiny Victorian.
Tiny little spire.
Hey, do we have to consider removing that language from the P O C D, because we have character spoken about in that document?
Yeah.
We reference that all the time, and that was approved by the state.
Yeah, one of the things brought up multiple, multiple, multiple times was even during the you know, about the character, and you know, how
Absolutely, we use that word all the time, it's in the minutes, yeah, we use that.
Yeah, and
Lie on that, because it's in the P O C D, which the state gave its blessing to, so, we're gonna kinda hang on to that.
Home groups and everything, that was one of the things they cited that they wanted to retain.
Exactly.
And
Because, that's a good question.
Because we can regulate density and scale and patterns of development, saying that you're worried that a certain type of development will have an impact on the town's rural character, let's say we're talking about a housing project of, of a hundred and fifty units, then that may not fit into the density and the scale of the town's desire to remain rural. Right. You're not saying that the development's gonna destroy the community of Wellington as we know it, but you're saying that the, the layout of the development, the context, the density is going to potentially be out of context with the vision of the town sort of build out. So, again, there is some ability for this stuff to still be regulated in that same way.
Well, this is bigger
Right, so we, we could still have a gable roof on a so we can still get a gable roof on a building where the application was put in as a flat roof, we just can't use the word "character" in our conditions.
Or, yeah, I, I think that because we can tie that modification to
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to tie, right, we, we wanted, we, right, we could say we wanted to look like the surrounding, we have, we have pretty broad stuff, we just can't use "character," okay? Semantics, I get it.
Next one is that you have to allow accessory dwelling units by right, which means without a public hearing. So, we currently allow separate family units as of right, but we require them to be fully contained in both the main dwelling and apartment have to be occupied by family. The other thing is that we do not allow a separate dwelling unit like this, a family unit. It has to have an, it has to be connected on the interior, which means you can't have a separate entrance.
Like, like a, like a fire stairs going up to it or something.
Or even just a, you know, a lot of things what we're seeing now is they'll build a house with a attached garage, and then they'll make in the space of like the third bay, a little small in-law apartment, and the connection is through the garage, but there's no actual finished space where they are connected. That wouldn't fly here, because we need to, it can only be one front door, essentially. So, we are gonna have to tweak our accessory dwelling unit regs a little bit. The other thing, and I, and I left this out, we have to also allow them to be detached. So
So, now you can, so you can have your mother-in-law apartment over the garage again?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Or a separate structure somewhere on the property.
Yeah.
Right.
It still has to fit in with septic and, and all that.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, that was, that was an old, that was an old rule, I mean, that was a rule that was established for the right reasons a long time ago, maybe it's not valid anymore, interesting.
Well, 'cause some of the things that people would throw over garages were death traps.
No, for, for God's sake, yes.
To lean down below, you've got all the things that are stored in the garage that are especially detached building.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you take a chicken coop, and you put a hundred students in it, that's pretty good money.
Yeah, so, so, you know, the, the regulations for health code stuff obviously still applied for number of bedrooms.
Right.
If you, you know, so for, for occupancy, if you're adding a bet, if you're adding more, if you build a house that's a three-bedroom system, and you add, you know, more than one bedroom, you have to go through an engineering, probably an expansion, and I think there are some, this is in the health code for, if you have two detached buildings that are pumping to the same septic, I think there's an additional layer of review there, so it's not, it's gonna be
Yeah, those are good rules, that's the right rule, I like them.
And, I, I think it's because they consider it to be a community system, because you have independent buildings which are pumping to the same system, and so I think there's another layer of health review that goes into that, I don't know for sure. You know, it's, it's much less expensive to make, to make your, your home, you know, expand either to build an addition or second floor or something than it is to do
Sure.
freestanding unit.
Good.
But, you know, we have actually received, we do get a fair number of calls on accessory dwelling units in the office, and our regs are, are, seem to be a little
This freestanding
I
Could be a tiny 'Cause most tiny homes are basically all the ones I've seen, like, when they show you
It's gonna happen, man.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna happen.
Um, I think that, yeah, a trans, something that was designed to be moved all the time, I don't think is the intent of what we talked about before with mobile home, I don't think the idea is you can buy a two-acre piece of property, park it in a bagel in the middle of it, and call it a day. It's a homestead, yeah, I guess if you wanna call it a homestead. But, you know, I, I think that for something like this, yeah, using an RV in the backyard for accessory dwelling unit, those types of things would not fly, and, and there is
No, right, that's right.
I, I paraphrase, I mean, most of this was included in the reorganization of a dash two, which came out of the Budget Implementor Bill and some other ones, the Budget Implementor Bill was like nine pages, so, I'm paraphrasing, but this is the long and short of it. The next one is the max floor area of an A D U, which is an accessory dwelling unit, can be the less of thirty percent of the gross floor area of the home, or a thousand square feet, which basically means, again, they don't want you to say, "You can have an A D U, but it's gotta be" Or a thousand square feet, uh, which basically means again, they don't want you to say you can have an A D U, but it's gotta be fifteen hundred square feet. They want um, they want people to be able to have these smaller apartments because perhaps a single, a single person. Or a, an in-law that's elderly. They don't need nine hundred square feet. Um, so.
No, they don't.
Yeah. So that, it's just, you know, because they've now said towns need to allow accessory dwelling units, they don't want towns to turn around and say, okay, we'll allow them. But they need to be the size of a house, essentially creating a need for duplex. So that's really what that speaks to. Um.
Yeah, that would make sense. Otherwise, if I had a hundred acres, I could build a whole bunch of homes. I could build four thousand square foot homes and say. Oh, these are, these are just mother-in-law, cause my family lives in them. It doesn't, but you know, yeah. I get it. That's good. Good rule. Smart.
Um. This shall adopt affordable housing plans. We've talked about this. All towns now need to prepare and keep up to date on affordable housing plan. Uh, have on a five-year basis. This, this was uh, established at the end of twenty seventeen. We're now getting into at the end of next fiscal years when we all need to have them done. So I applied for um, a grant which we received. So we'll probably be beginning that in September. I just need to get loves off the ground and rolling and then I'll have some time back. When are they kicking off that? Loves? Yeah. Um, well, that ball is really in their court. They have really struggled with getting um, the letter of credit pulled together. Um, our requirements for our approvals demand that they bond a significant. Portion of the project. Um, so they are having to pull together a letter of credit. Almost. Uh, probably on about five million dollars. So um, it's taken a lot of time to get that rooted because they're, it's like closing on the house. Um, so we've got everything else executed. They've done their, their um. Tree clearing limits have been staked and field verified. The clerk of the works has been hired. We have the contract stuff hammered out. The conservation easement map uh, has been provided to the town. Um, we have, or we've had a pre-construction meeting. Purpose, everything are squared away. So we just need to get the bond in place. Um, and they can, they can pretty much get started. Um. It's, it's been quite a whirlwind. Um, with the number of people that have been involved in the very, you know, various subcontractors and. And uh, it's been crazy trying to get that thing rolling. Um, so that should, I mean, hopefully next week.
Well, that's a big deal. Um. Mike, are you planning on leaving and getting another job anytime soon?
Me? No, no, I'm, I'm a consultant. I'm gonna be here until Wellington tells me to go away.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, no, Wellington has been, been actually quite busy. Um, we have received. A uh, a lot of, we've been getting a lot of phone calls, a lot of people stopping in. I've been getting tons of emails. People are sniffing around Wellington. There's just, well, a lot of towns around us are really expensive and we're not frankly. Um, and so we've just been real busy with, with a lot of people. So we may have some more on our, on our plates in the next couple of months.
All right.
Um. Technical review fees, um. Basically, and we have um, an ordinance which allows for this. But basically it says that if the town has to hire some technical um. Person to do a review of an application. Let's say we decide we need to hire our own traffic engineer or our own. I don't know, light study that we need to, something. We can charge the app, and this is what we did for loves on the wetland side. Um, we hired a private.
Exactly right. The fish, the fish guy.
Uh, well, no, the fish guy came from the state. But we hired a, a private wetland professional who represents towns.
Yeah, okay. Third guy, something like that. I remember that.
Um, so that's pretty much it. Um, as far as. The legislative review. Um, one of the things that I wanted to sort of throw out there. As we start talking about all these other little tweaks that we're gonna have to, to make is um. And in line with some of the questions that we've been getting in the office about the use of buildings, one of the things that's. Se- seems to be a little bit problematic, especially in the South Willing, uh, South Wellington, in um. The Phelps Plaza River Road, that area there. Um, you know, some of the uses that people have been asking about or that some of those buildings lend themselves to are not inherently allowed. With the existing DC zone um, as written. Um, so one of the things that I thought we might be well served to consider. Is when we have the hearing to re, sort of reevaluate the uses in the South Wellington area, if we sort of put up. A comparison to the DC zone for that area of town and perhaps try to create a little bit of a connection between the two for the types of uses. Between three thirty-five River Road, which is that building next to Dunkin' Donuts. The small barn that is across from what was the River and Rail, the River and Rail. Um, and some of the other stuff that's there.
What happened to the River and Rail?
They retired and closed.
Well, he's too young to retire.
And then they retired, closed and moved to Arizona or something.
Okay.
That's what I was told, you know, I don't know. But you know, if the commission thought it made sense. I would put together some type of a comparison so we could kind of look at both areas. Because I think that, you know, we have everything by special permit, number one. So nothing is allowed as a. Right. But number two, I think we need to be in a position to be more responsive to the types of uses that we're gonna start seeing. And you know, railroad rapid transit lines is one use that we have. We're never gonna see that. Um, so.
That's too bad. You.
We could use it.
Yeah.
Who's gonna ride it? How many people you think we could?
Well, Mike, if I can just stop, just stop you there. Uh, if I heard you right, are you suggesting that all of those different little areas have different usage allowances?
Well, so, so the DC zone currently is in the Phelps Plaza area. And then um, it's sort of peppered in a cer- in a cer- certain section of South Wellington as you get towards Mansfield. And then we have a couple of spots here and there. So we're gonna be. Creating or the E D C is proposing to create with you guys. A new zone for South Wellington, which basically will start at the fishing game club and run to the Mansfield line. Which will encourage the reuse of those buildings. Um, and so the thought was. Perhaps some of those uses. You know, the South Wellington village regs that were, you're gonna see are really focused on. The architectural significance of South Wellington area.
Okay, right.
Obviously Phelps Plaza is not architecturally significant, but a lot of the uses that we might want in South Wellington. We may also want to allow in that area.
Absolutely. Makes sense.
So I'm feeling like what would be a good idea is for us to consider when we're looking at South Wellington. Including in some of those uses in the existing DC zone in the. Area.
Yeah, yeah, I like it. Consistency matters.
Yeah.
Seems like a worthy goal.
Peop- South Wellington, West Will, you know, all these little areas of town, they don't draw people to Wellington for different reasons. They're not inherently different from one another. They're. Somewhat rural, but still close to the highway, you know.
Yeah.
Not too far from certain larger cities. So someone's not gonna be attracted to. Phelps Plaza and not South Wellington. It's really a function of what they're looking for, for size and price. And so I think our regs need to be. Uh, more similar in uses.
I would have public hearing. Yeah, so it'd be interesting to see what people think.
Yeah, and so we did have a, we did have a public information meeting on, with economic development related to the lots of project and we also. Um, included all the things that E D C was looking to do under this reg. And, and that was advertised to all of the people in the project area. They all got a direct mailing. So um, you know, there are people that are aware that this is happening. We've had very little feedback, but the feedback we've gotten was that I think it's great that. You know, we're working to um, encourage adaptive reuse of some of these structures. Um, so what I'll do is I'll create a little bit of a comparison so that we can evaluate both. I'll, and then I'll refer it out to projects when we have the hearing. We can kind of look between the different zones and. See what we think fits appropriately for each.
Great work.
Well, when we looked, when we looked at South Wellington, uh, when they, when uh, they had the grant. And then we're, we're talking about a village district down there. Village district was just too, too restrictive.
Yeah.
And it just, it just needed, some of it, some of the. Points were well taken, but this, it was just, it was gonna cost the town way too much and it was, I think it was too much of a burden. On the people living in the village.
I agree. Uh, I remember that.
You know, we just, we need something that is gonna work for the folks that live there. Uh, yet. Try to conserve the look and feel of that place, but allow, allow the, the village to grow. In, you know, in a new way. You know, so for instance, uh, 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 B and Bs. There's no reason why so- some of those buildings couldn't be used in, as B and Bs.
Indeed.
Uh, I, I, you know, overall, I think.
Things like that too, and all kinds of little boutique type businesses and.
Yeah. I, I, I think one thing that's lacking down there, but I, I don't think it's ir- uh, unsurmountable. Is uh, obviously uh, wastewater uh, treatment. But if you look behind stock and lock, there's a, there's a large. I was, I guess there's three pieces of property or two pieces of property. Behind that house that's right next to the, the old emissions building. There's, there's a large piece of property there. I can't see why with state grants and with the towns uh, backing. That uh, a s- a sizable uh, wastewater treatment facility couldn't be there. You know, subtle sort of like TA has or some of the apartments has. And to facilitate uh, some of these uh, other uses that people are uh, talking about.
I've seen wastewater facilities um, that were um, disguised as houses. They look like uh, every other house in the development. Except it was wastewater treatment. You know, there's twenty houses in the development. One of them was a wastewater point.
What a great idea. What percentage of the village would you say right now is like rental housing? Like, is that like one of the duplexes that they're, they're rented?
Hey, that old barn, the old barn's falling apart. The old deals place, put it in there. Kind of close to the lake, the pond, but that's.
Well, you've got that brown field right on the side of the barn too, Andy.
So I didn't even know about that. So huh, interesting.
Those between the barn and the uh, water company.
Oh, okay. I went down there the other day. Barn was all blocked off, falling apart.
Yeah, yeah. Didn't take but a few years for it to really go to hell.
Cost of maintenance.
Buildings require that.
Yeah, so you know, and, and we talked about the big grant that the mill got to do a lot of renovations of that building. You know, there may be. That may and will hopefully facilitate additional occupancy and additional businesses that wanna go in there. They're currently in that weird place where to get anybody new, they need to get a variance. Because it's, you know, an R eighty zone, which is crazy. We have that old Drew's Tavern building, which.
Yep.
Thing and, and granted. There's, there's some other challenges with the owner on that one. And you know, we're doing everything we can, but it's been an uphill battle. Um, but we need to be able to be responsive when someone comes and says, hey, I'd really be interested in doing. X, Y, and Z. I think we need to basically be in the position to say, okay, well, let's go to P and Z and talk about it and see if. Rather than, well, it's not one of the twelve uses that's allowed. So you better, you know, move along to Mansfield.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I agree.
That's not realistic anymore.
Nope.
No.
We should always be trying to find a solution. That is mutually beneficial.
Yeah. Um, so. Between everything else that's going on, I think now's the right time. So, okay, we will um. We will uh, pull something together and I'll uh, refer it with the E D C amendment. And um, it'll be something that we can consider. Probably, there'll probably be the first meeting in September because I need thirty days at least.
Sounds good.
Sure does.
All right, uh, I don't. So the only other thing that I had was the Affordable Housing Plan. It's pretty much just to put it on your radar. Um, you know, some towns put together another committee to do this. Some towns, the board selectmen do this, some, you know. A lot of towns is P and Z. Um, so I just wanted to put it out there to you guys to make sure you didn't not wanna do it. Um, you know, I think that we have a challenge of getting people to volunteer and be parts of boards and commissions and committees. So. Trying to find another working group to put together an affordable housing plan is probably not gonna be super easy. Um. The process doesn't take all that long. We're not talking six months. Um. So this, you know, the idea would be to start in September and have it executed by the end of the grant deadline. Um. It would be part of, just become a regular part of our meetings here. We would just start going through that and. Um, so that'll hopefully be coming in September unless you tell me, no, we don't wanna do it. Get another committee together.
Do you think any of the people on E D C would be interested in uh, get, getting involved in the conversation like with that?
Um, I mean, I'm sure they would be willing to participate. And we will certainly have public engagement as part of it. You know, plans focus is defined is how the town is going to. Uh, encourage more affordable housing developments, right? And so. You know, economic development, because they're non-regulatory, they can sing the praises of pretty much anything, but they don't really have the ability to. Put their fit thumb on the scale.
Gotcha.
But we'll certainly have them participate in, in the, the parts of the public outreach that'll be part, you know, included in the plan.
I, I think we're probably the commission best suited to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What did you say, Andy?
I said, I agree with you.
Okay. What are you, what's the right, what do you think, Bob?
No, that's, that's all right. I mean, you know, uh. I think in six months, we should be able to get, get through it.
It's gonna be some work, but you know, it's, it's. Important, you know, to get this done and do it thoughtfully. What about you, John? What's your thoughts?
Yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd agree with Bob. Yeah. It's gonna take some time, but it's worth doing.
Uh, Joe, do you have any, any opinion?
I agree.
Okay.
I think it's worth the effort.
Um, so yeah, I mean, the plans, cause they're only good for five years. They're, they're fairly small. You know, we typically look at about three months or so. Uh, to go through the process. Um, that's what, you know, my, my partner and I are writing them for a number of towns and. You know, that's what we typically look at for an average amount of time. We have, you know, a demographic analysis, we'll do regulatory review, we'll do a public information session with a presentation. Um, we do a survey, um, which we distribute. Um, so. You know, we'll go through and hit all the high points, but because it's a fairly small topic. And especially in a town like Wellington, it's not like we just say, okay, yeah, you can build it here and connect to sewer. You know, a lot of the possibilities are off the table. Um, so it's looking at how to make. Housing that's here remain attainable to, to people that wanna move in.
Well, like our senior housing already qualifies. Some of the apartment, we have a lot of apartment units in this town. Right. Obviously, because there are proximity to UConn too, but.
But the regs now wouldn't, wouldn't allow the apartments that we have. You know, so maybe that we wanna look at making it so that they're not non-conforming. So that they maybe can add an additional phase. You know, we've had a couple of apartment owners say we wanna expand to make our apartments more marketable. Um, but because they're not conforming, they can't. Um.
What happened with the guy, the grad, who used to be a grad student at UConn? He wanted to put the apartments up.
Two things. Yeah, so last I heard, he was still kind of spinning around. He had his wetlands delineation done and there were a lot more wetlands on the property than the initial field investigation. And then the other thing, so between that and our regulations define multifamily as quote, a high intensity use. Which increases the setbacks. So between the wetlands and the, the doubled setbacks, he can't get very many units. So he's trying to figure out if it, yeah, if he can even make it go because he can only get like seven units and the construction costs are just crazy. So uh, he's, he's down, but he's not quite out.
That's too bad.
So that's, that's what I got for uh, in the hopper.
Okay, for adjourn, anybody have anything? Hey. Let's see, it is uh. Eight twenty-one PM, meeting adjourned.
Nice work.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.